I want to be there instead of here. There is probably better than that.
If you're happy to put them out. I don't know which has left Germany. I'm going to sit down.
If we can call today's meeting to order Kathleen Allen, Heather Del Conti, here.
Pamela Dow.
Here.
Lisa Blitton.
Here.
Jim McKenzie.
Linda Serena.
Here.
If you will all stand in one ear and one knee. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our Next is the appointment of the temporary chair. Since the new board members have come out and given their oath yet, I ask that the four prior board members vote on this. Appointment to appoint the temporary chair Karen Maylie at this time until the board president and vice president are elected. If I could have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next on the agenda is the oath of the office of the newly elected board members. I, um, um, sorry. Supreme Court Judge the Honorable Scott Alpachi has offered to come in to do the oath of the new board members. So if I could have the new board members move into the center and Judge Alpachi will.
Mm-hmm.
Opote.
The row is between two floors.
Please raise your right hand. And you be grateful that. I.
Aye. Anyone else?
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a member of the Oswego City School Board of Education.
As a member of the Oswego City School Board of Education.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
The following oath sits on the table. There's one for each of you.
First one.
Yep. Thank you. At this time, on the agenda, I am asking if any board members would have nominees, nominations for board president. A second. Any other nominations? Next, if I could have a roll call vote, please. Kathleen Allen. Tom Chapa.
Yes.
Heather Del Conti.
Yes.
Pamela Dow.
Yes.
Lisa Blitton.
Yes.
Jim McKenzie.
Yes.
Linda Serena.
Yes.
Nomination for board president Heather Del Conti has passed. So if I could ask Heather to, um, go to the middle and just help him. Most of you.
Please raise your right hand. I Heather Del Conti.
I Heather Del Conti.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Oswego City School District Board of Education.
Of the Oswego City School District Board of Education.
And the best of my ability.
The best of my abilities.
And a president.
As president. Of the Board of Education.
So.
So help me God.
Next on the agenda is office of vice president. Would there be any nomination for vice president?
I nominate Kathleen Allen.
Almost please, or excuse me, roll call. Kathleen Allen. Tom Chapa.
Yes.
Heather Del Conti.
Yes.
Pamela Dow.
Yes.
Lisa Blitton.
Yes.
James McKenzie.
Yes.
Linda Serena. The resolution has passed, so if I could ask Kathleen Allen to step in the middle and just say hello.
Kathleen, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Kathleen Allen. Do solemnly swear. To support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge. The duty of my office and vice president of the Board of Education. For the Oswego City.
Oswego City.
And the best of my ability. So.
Kathleen, if you'd like to join up here or.
Call up the auditor.
Yeah, because you're all ready.
I'm off that.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Is anyone interested? Can you, you, you place that way there? Thank you. Next, just a moment. Next on the agenda is recommended actions. That the following appointments be made for the twenty. Twenty twenty-one school year is presented. Architect of record, Ken Kane. Inspector Spence of me, David Chris Coley. Clerk of the Board of Education, School District Court, Karen Maylie. Dignity for All Students Act. Dr. Robert Duffy. District Treasurer, John Edwards. Deputy District Treasurer, Joyce Colletta. Caras, My Compliance Officer, Dr. Robert Duffy. Health Insurance Consulting Services. BNB Insurance. Internal Auditor, Founded V O N Company. Internal Plains Auditor, Tom Crawley. Records Retention and Disposition Officer, Nancy Squires. Records Access Officer, Karen Maylie. School District Purchasing Agent, Nancy Squires. Tax Collector, Joyce Colletta. Medicaid Compliance Officer, Lisa Marie Carter. Official Bank Depository. J P Morgan Chase Manhattan. Official District Newspapers, with a plenty of time. Official Media Website, that's for the City School District. Title Nine Compliance Officer, Dr. Robert Duffy. Insurance Courier. Peace and Sure Associates. Data Protection Officer, Jamie Seikert. If I could have a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I only have a discussion in terms of, are we supposed to move from the temporary chair to moving to the top?
Um. I definitely think.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure.
I want some.
We enacted this temporary chair.
That's a good point, although you just want a good job, just keep going.
You know, before we move on, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think we just.
And just to rotate this, and page this, and, and the president, vice president, and that sort of thing. Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure if we had a problem with that, great.
Oh, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is the independent auditor. Appointment of the school year twenty twenty-one. That the Board of Education approved the appointment of Mendel, Metzger, and Barr. A company as independent auditor for the Oswego City School District for the school year twenty twenty twenty-one. Subject to annual renewal by the Board of Education for certain, to board policy thirteen thirty-four. Um, Heather Del Conti, do you want me to read through all of these or read them on my own?
Uh.
I'm sorry.
We do not need to read them. Read them on my own.
Oh, approval.
Unless anyone else would like that.
Here.
Make sure.
Uh, number three, approval of all city school district policies. Number four, purchasing policy, annual review. Fifty-four ten and fifty-four eleven, policy and regulations. Number five, amendment of tax rules for the school year twenty 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 twenty-one. Investment in funds, school year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, policy fifty-two twenty and regulations. Fifty-two twenty. Certification of payroll for the school year twenty twenty twenty-one. Number eight, contract health services provided to private schools and other school districts authorizing to sign. School year twenty 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 twenty-one. Patrick, health services provided to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one private schools for the school district. Authorization to sign, school year twenty 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 twenty-one. Petty cash funds authorization for school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, policy fifty-five thirty. And regulation fifty-five thirty R and R one. Eleven, disposable surplus obsolete equipment if periods of medical. Approval for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
Why don't we stop at eleven there, just because in case anyone had any questions?
Sure.
Where we are, but that's just like.
If I could have a motion for Revolution Two, approval of eleven.
Move it. Second.
Any questions?
Only any questions about those.
Yeah, actually Nancy, can you just explain the circle of ops we did with, um, what we try to do with this one? Absolutely. So, um, for any equipment that we have, I get forms from all of the schools. And they have, uh, either a serial number or a tag number on it. And they ask me, you know, what do they think should happen to this? And then they tell me the condition of it. If it is, um, in good condition, uh, we usually put those aside to maybe repurpose in another school. Or we put them to auction at Auctions International to sell, the same way we do our buses. Um, other things, if it's broken, or we usually scrap metal and we get paid for that. Or we, um, just dispose of it. Technology equipment, um, Jamie Seikert actually has a plan with a vendor. They usually buy back iPads and things like that. Uh, we don't get a lot of money for it, but at least, um, it is, um, used for, uh, recycling. Um, so that's what we do.
Because I think last year there was a concern of a lot of desks were being sold off, and desks being sold.
Mm-hmm.
So are, are we permitted in any way to give those things away? If you might be able to use them or are we not?
Um, we can. What we are concerned about, and I've checked with the insurance company, is a lot of the desks that were disposed of. They were old, outdated, rusty. So the concern would be for the district to give one of those things away, something to give for a contingency to the district. So we try to keep that in mind, um, at, at everything that we do. So, um, usually if we can't sell it in an auction, it usually goes to, it usually is disposed of. Because it is in that poor quality or quality.
But they would always put it auction first.
Yes, yes. At, uh, two years ago, we had a really massive au- auction. Uh, the transportation department was full of things that, that were being auctioned. We had to auction them in lots, um, that is set up by the auction company. And, uh, we did get rid of a lot of, a lot of things that way. I think we made like three thousand dollars, uh, which was really good for, for things that we could never use. Uh, but the rest, um, if we, because we don't want to store it, especially if it's in poor condition, we just, um, dispose them.
But that's a last resort.
As a last resort.
How equal when we get fondness.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next.
Separate.
Sure. Item twelve, attorney for the Board of Education in the school district attorney appointment, school year twenty twenty twenty-one. That the Board of Education appoints a law firm as the Oswego City School District Attorney for the twenty 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 twenty-one school year. Could I have a motion?
A motion.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is item thirteen, is the committee appointments for the Board of Education for the twenty 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 twenty-one school year. Um, right now we have listed the policy, facilities, and audit committee. Would there be anyone that would like to be our vice president? Go ahead. Um, next is, um.
Maybe I should explain to the new board members what these are.
Yeah.
Just get, just get the right to this one. We have two sets of committees. Through, one, one set of committees are, I'm going through throughout the year and the, the three major areas of policy. So the policy review and local facilities. So facility committee, that's the, that's the team that works most closely on capital, capital projects and reviewing things around our facilities. And then the audit committee completes, um, multiple times a year to review reports from our internal and external auditors and things like that. So those committees are appointed at the annual meeting today. The next set of meetings are board meeting committees. We have our agenda set up in, in sections. You have personnel, you have finance, and you have. And your curriculum. So those are committees that review the agenda before the meeting. And they're, they're, they're helpful at meetings to talk about and support resolutions that are being brought forward. Because you had a conversation with one of the executive directors who shared those subcommittees with advance. So when those resolutions come to the board, there are members of each of those committees that are able to talk to the resolutions a little more clearly than the rest of the board members. And they meet during agenda review the end of the week prior to a board meeting. So there's two sets of meetings, committees. These committees that meet throughout the year that are board committees that are annually appointed. And then we have the less formal committees that are board agenda committees of curriculum, finance, and personnel.
Yeah, and typically we, we populate them based on what people feel their area of expertise is, but also availability. So I will tell you with the capital project going, facilities is up to ten, like, um, typically, yeah. Time consuming and, and intense right now. You guys need to use them, don't you?
Go with the update and then, yeah.
So, and we as a board are looking for, you know, obviously now, um, even the facilities coming to report back at our meetings now. So, um, policy is kind of an ad needed, ad needed kind of thing, um. Yeah, and then, but sometimes if the policy we want changed, then we might need another kind of an audit.
Also kind of it, we have our certain periods of year where we have our audits. And when those audits are, and then they always do presentations for the audit committee. And then always come also before the school board.
Yeah. Is, is that a financial audit or like an evidence of the whole?
It could, it could be all types of audits. But typically a financial. If you can have an internal audit that might look at some other function in the district.
Then you might have somebody on audit who also does the financial for the regular wardens.
Yeah, if you feel like finance is something that we really get to that and enjoy, that's, and find yourself on audit, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
When do the other committees get populated? But these ones are formalized now, when are those others populated?
They could also be formulated today. You could choose those or you might do them at some type of organizational retreat.
Yeah, or sometimes we'd wait for the next meeting to do them, only because there's so much that has to happen here and those stuff may not happen there. So it's going to be internally decided to go over the debt, resolutions, so it's, so better than I think we.
The purpose of those, um, board committees, that, in terms of the agenda committees, is to provide greater transparency and exposure to what the agenda is about and is in the day. Um, not all districts do it that way. It's something we started several years ago and it's.
And this board doesn't have to do it that way.
And you don't have to do that.
I think some of us have found very helpful.
Yep.
But it may be something the board side they don't want to do, so that's, that's, I think, just like. And we can go along that road and then change too, if we're, so those committees. So.
Or you could choose an after review, review of the agenda for, for the summer and then on September first, there may be a desire to do something different.
So I also noticed in the policies, and many, many policies that do that. Um, one of them was for visiting committee. It wasn't fair to be one of the, that was a standing committee, it was ad hoc hall, um, as a whole. It was to be made up of board members for the schools. I can remember policy on the.
Did that, did that go back to when we go to our time of school?
It may, I just can't over that one too. I remember, yeah.
Exactly.
Is that what it is?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's something to get, um, so one policy committee is put in place, we may want to revisit that. And if that's something we want to do or not do, we have policy making is really one of the exciting things we get to do for the board, so.
Yes, it's, um, it's, uh, twenty-two ten, maybe with the board. There's actually the last paragraph is the visitation committee. It shall appoint one or more committees, committees to visit every school or department at least once annually. So it's a shell.
I believe it was discussed last year and it was, it just wasn't something that we wanted to do at that time.
Right.
Well, I think we tried to do it when we hold our meetings at, at school. And, um, they present or they do something separate for us and they take us for tours through the school and some of their initiatives. For that year that they're done.
Also transition to the one year left, which is a board member can have a school.
Right, yeah.
We found that one more to read. Board member was signed with what the liaison, the kids were building. We've had success and that's, that's a better time.
Flexibility with how we want that to work.
Some board members would like flexibility with visiting all the schools. And that just defines the one.
So we need to populate these. Does anybody have a, obviously if you can plan up to two, that's fantastic, but if you can't, and obvious, um, so the policy and audit usually, um, right before a regular visiting meeting. Usually about four thirty. Um, and again, those are typically, um, orderly. And then the facilities, like I said, it really is part of a little more flexibility in some time and someone who loves the. The project.
And that committee also would demand flexibility in your work desk. Because a lot of your work with the facilities committee happens in the morning or during the day because we're doing the capital project.
So I think Kathleen, then you have interest in that and you have interest in staying on it. Okay. Is there anyone else who has interest in facilities?
I'll give it a try.
I don't know. I don't know.
And two of you, it sounds like we're not, but I don't want to get any, enjoy. Building.
Your question was.
Karen, you'll put out those to me.
Yep, that point. Okay, how about policy?
I could be policy and I could be an audit. Both of them, I can stand that time frame and I should have it made as opposed to that.
Okay, and before I say my policy.
Where would you like to be?
Um, I mean, I feel like I could be either of those, but I probably would be good for the board or the board, so.
Sure.
Because the board number, I'm either of those, so.
Really good.
Yeah. Well, I typically start on policy, so I can stay on policy for life. And then, um, and then is there somebody who has done, who's done on audit before?
I have.
Tom, Tom's on audit. It wasn't. Tom Brandon is saying.
Well, I wasn't, like, said it.
Oh.
Would you be interested in audit?
No, but I'll do it.
Okay. Hey, think you're like, plug in, and you can get two reasons why you're gonna.
Well, if, he said, you know, with programs, I need to buy that. Policy or audit, you can buy that. I've used the big data sets and numbers to audit.
Audit it?
It works well.
I just got a point.
That's good, okay. It sounds like you're perfect for that.
I do, I do a lot of data.
Okay. That's perfect, and you can actually be either. Okay.
Um, I, yeah, I could do policy and audit.
Okay.
I have some finance, that's true.
Okay. Okay, so did you get those?
I get, I'm going to just repeat those if I can. Yep. Policy, I get Pam, Heather, and Lisa.
Mm-hmm.
Facilities, I have Kathleen, Lisa, or excuse me, Linda, and Jim.
Tom. Facilities, Kathleen, Tom, and Linda.
Yeah. Right.
This is how you sign up for. Audit would be Jim, Tom, and Lisa.
I have Jim, Tom, and Pam.
Oh.
I have Pam for, um, oh.
I, I can go, I said.
Oh, go wherever you want, okay. So we can do one or two, I guess, isn't it?
I can now, it's one, seven.
All right, so we'll put Pam back on, on audit.
Yeah.
No, Pam, Tom, and Jim.
Pam has gone to everyone's board meeting for the beginning of time.
Well, not everyone. No, Pam will come to this daily.
So I'm just going to repeat that one more time. Policy, I have Pam, Heather, and Lisa.
Yep.
Facilities, I have Kathleen, Linda, and Tom. Audit, I have Pam, Tom, and Jeff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is the student representative to the Board of Education for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year.
Wait, this picture. Fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah.
I'm. If I could have a motion to approve the district organizational chart.
A motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
And this also means that if there's changes that, you know, we can move it forward, you can come back and change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is the student representative to the Oswego City School District Board of Education. That the Oswego City School District elect one student representative to serve one year term on the Oswego City School District Board of Education. And whereas the student is to be, to represent the Oswego City School District student population and play an active leadership role. Whereas the Oswego City School District Board of Education accepts the student representative and expects that student's participation as a non-voting Board of Education member and therefore be a result that the Board of Education endorses the collection of data Olson, the student representative, according to the established guidelines. If I could have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Let me try the second. Any questions?
No, I just like to say I always get excited when we get new student rep, our last one that's been kept, you know. I just see what data.
I want to know the, that makes me, I should be very careful.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is the consent agenda, minutes of our regular meeting of June seventeenth, twenty twenty. And the special education board report of July first, twenty twenty. If I could have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is curriculum with Carrie Clapp. This is section five oh four committee, committee on preschool special education and committee on special education care for twenty 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 twenty-one. That the board appoint the following makeup, for the following makeup of the committees listed. And also listed on the page, next page are the representatives that could fill those assigned roles. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Next is personnel, Dr. Sweet.
Hello, everybody, welcome. New board members. Um, number one, administrative tenure recommendation, Samantha Spalding, assistant principal, Tito Mills School effective July sixth. Um, just if we wanted to do it the same way.
Yeah, let's, well, yeah, well, let's do this one, I think we're gonna have to have one, at least one.
We wanted to do this one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion, please?
Move that.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
You might call the vote.
Vote call, I'm sorry. Kathleen Naylor?
Yes.
Tom Ciafo?
Yes.
Amanda Pampi?
Yes.
Pamela Dow?
Yes.
Lisa Bligh?
Yes.
Dave McKenzie?
Yes.
Linda Toreno?
You just say it.
Of course, I'm. Okay.
That's beautiful. Whatever I need to do.
I need six zero.
One. Um, then I normally put groups of professional staff recommendations together that make sense. Then I do extra comps, then I do support staff, so I'll leave them, but certainly if you have any questions on that group, you know, flip the. Uh, number two, professional staff recommendation, resignation, Catherine Celeste for boys and girls, varsity, top student. Three is a lead with absence for Stacy Lamanna, teaching assistant at the high school, she's taking an educational leave of absence for next school year. Four is the literacy coach, Sherry Beck at the middle school, and that is under our ESS school improvement outcomes. Five, we have our next batch of probationary teacher appointments. Kelly Jackson, art at Riley, Rebecca Kibler, special education at FLS. Julia Pinsey, science at the high school, Brian Miller, music, split position. Tim Miller, music, also a split position. Lauren Miter, special education at Minneto. Brian Raffelt, school counselor at Layton. Six are our professional staff recommendations, regular substitute teachers. And they are regular substitutes who were appointed for the school year, but then usually are leave of absence type of position. Joshua Bradbury, childhood education, one two six at Layton. Hillary Burnow, elementary education, also at Layton. And Claire Donovan, English at the middle school.
Resolutions two through six. If I could have a motion? Hold on.
Okay. Second and then question.
Okay. Second?
Okay.
Okay, just a second. Um, so I I don't know if it's a typo, but for the music teachers, KPS is twice. Um, I'm assuming more of them is FPS, I don't know if it matters, but.
No, sometimes they're split and sometimes one, depending on.
Oh, okay.
It's. It's not general and music, it's a band orchestra.
Band, yeah.
Oh, they do split, it's with writing to do individual lessons.
Okay.
Over.
So there's.
It just happens that we have two openings and they're both shared positions, so it gets, it looks a little confusing with the two instrumental folks. They're shared between buildings and one of them is in both buildings.
Oh, right.
Yep.
And the tenure area being music, they could be that they're band strings, general music, so there's different needs.
Okay, are those both related?
No, no, obviously, no.
I, we were looking for.
Right, and no.
Oh, we.
Suddenly there are a lot of great ideas left to find more, now they're.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I feel that's not replaced.
We.
Yes, but.
So what positions are these board?
Sure, so Brian Miller is coming in as elementary orchestra, split position, Riley, Minneto and Kingsburg. He is replacing, if I remember the movement correctly, Brian McElroy, who then went to the middle school to replace Devon Missouri, who retired for.
Correct.
Yep, and then. Pam?
I didn't hear it, I'm just.
No.
No. Uh, and Tim is replacing Brian Bowden, who was a resignation here at FLS and KPS. And he does um kind of like a band, general band.
So we still are looking for a, uh, no, excuse me.
No, but you got appointed in the last.
We've been.
Oh, that was the last one, okay.
Yeah.
Knock on wood, we've had a wonderful background with some music companies. Some of them had reached out to us last year because they were in uh long-term self-position, they were very interested in coming here, but they were committed to our district. Um, and then one was finishing up their house. Yeah, it's a nice group.
Items two through six, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Now, next batch, we have extra compensatory to number seven.
Can I ask the work of what they are? I mean, I don't understand what they do, the person who's managers and how buildings they work in.
Sure, yeah. So this spring, um, we obviously had to kind of jump in immediately with our enrichment and then our essential. So Carrie can talk a little bit more about the elementary aspect, but what she worked through was divide up by grade level. And she looked for leadership grade level folks who could then kind of be the point of communication between the principals, Carrie, and I don't wanna step on those.
One, um, what is assigned for math, one is assigned for ELA at each grade level basis. And they got coordinated to online learning, uh, creating all the slides that we did, they they were the pointy persons to kind of do the last pass through of anything before we applied to the students.
Um, where was this in our um budget line?
We, let's do a question second and then we can can discuss the rest.
No, yeah, we had any.
Yeah, well, well, let's do this in line, because I think she's got a lot of questions about this one, if you want to honor that, can we get a question or a question?
Yep, sure.
Um, first, can't second, okay, then we'll stop that well.
Is, was this in our budget line, did we know about it, and if not, where are we getting money from?
Actually, no, because of the um, the way this on the slide, um, online learning, it wasn't planned to do ahead of time.
Yeah, with that, yeah.
So um, when we needed it, actually Nancy, I mean, of course, Nancy should buy the money to help coordinate.
And will this be a yearly thing or just until we get through?
Just till we get through the online learning and with this, to help coordinate what's happening with ELA and LA.
Right, right. So these folks were appointed, it's difficult, we could sometimes be retroactive, it was negotiated after, we came up there at LA about, I'm not writing an agreement.
Right.
And they're appointed as needed for twenty-seven through sixteen. We don't know what really the fall would look like yet and will we include our direction in them?
Yeah.
If that were the case, that we needed more of these types of folks, we would definitely work with Nancy and try to coordinate what's happening with ELA and LA.
So those two.
And that is Mary and Ashley and Sherry pretty much.
Grade level, they're from all different, all five buildings, they were spread out. It wasn't a specific building, we, the principals, um, the five principals and myself met to act folks that really um wouldn't wouldn't mind being in leadership role from behind the scenes, because you think about this, because I'll do, would we, it had to be somebody comfortable meeting with folks without being interrupting, we wouldn't miss that.
And they were, they were, so Linda's question, fifty dollars per week for the seven weeks, their total was three hours, fifty hours.
Oh.
But some of them, they were putting in.
Well, I was supposed to say.
Sixteen dollars.
Twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was really just kind of a petence of a monetary honorarium to say thank you for all, for all of the work you did.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Okay. Number eight, extra compensatory, this is for extended school year. So we have quite a batch that comes from um Dr. Duffy and Lisa Carter's group. So we have teachers, we have committee on special education and preschool committee on special education, that is all of eight. Number nine, extra compensatory positions for the middle school. These are, if you noticed, a meeting or two ago, we appointed summer work for councilmen. This is in addition to, um, Mary Beck had asked, we had a little more money within her grant fund. And they need some work done over the summer based on the plan that they have submitted which they approve. So she worked with Carrie's office and vowed to work out if their councilors get a few more days this summer to work on their ESS action plan. So that's number nine. Number ten, uh, each summer, we annually appoint our extra comp in-service folks. They have uh attended the appropriate training. They may not all work throughout the year, this is just an ad's new list. But they're people who we tap to lead certain professional development to the school district. And um Carrie's office manages yearly, looking at who's approved and uh who's taking the record of training. So that's that whole list. And then that's up there.
Items eight through ten, if I could have a motion, please?
Move that.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna know, is the COVID restrictions, are they gonna cause problems to come up?
Yes, I know that, um, city took the lead and made it back to do all of their extended school year required teaching participants for facilities remotely. And um even the name of the college, we will be providing a um.
Online.
Online instruction under extended school year grant.
Okay, and then.
So it has created a lot of.
Yeah.
People are still not ready to really come back. And we won't have any further guidance on free entry into select.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Um, number eleven, support staff recommendation, two resignations, Anne, Dan and Monde Parker, both in food service. Twelve, support staff recommendation, temporary summer, Sherry Lawton. Um, library clerk at the high school, but she actually runs the book room, the textbook organizational room. And she is approved each summer for some time in order to organize textbooks. This year especially because we've had so many coming back in from the students rather randomly, but also any new books we've ordered have to come in and be tagged and told if they're going to be assisted by the call. And then thirteen, support staff recommendation, probationary planner, Megan Murka, a studio worker at Riley.
Motion, please? Eleven through thirteen?
If motion.
Second?
Aye.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is finance with Nancy Carter. Number one is our agreement with a school hospital, this is to establish student mental health clinics in our district, we are adding the high school this year. We already have um clinics in Fisher Park, Riley, Minneto and the middle school. Number two is a contract for health and welfare services for East Surf East Manoa. This is for our school students that may be attending, attending um non-public school in that air outside of our district. Number three is a contract with South Aldridge for bilingual psych evaluation. Um, this is paid out of the uh federal six eleven grant, it's for a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, not sixty, twenty hours uh for the year. Four is a agreement with Dever, Deveraux Advanced Behavioral Health. This is for private placement um for special education students, we have one student pending for next year. Number five is an agreement with Fran Fran San Latino for first step universal prepaid. This is for our universal prepaid program, which is mainly funded by federal funds, there is a small bucket of funds in general fund to support that as well. Number six is an L A, which is the Department of Social Services. This is an agreement um for transportation of foster students throughout the year. And it is a two-year agreement through two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. And that's it. Resolutions one through six, if I could have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Nancy, can you um just explain some of these things, I'm not saying that, I mean, like each week and um for each of these contracts and then also um how much is covering the grant for the week to pay, how much should you pay? I I I'm not saying an amount for.
Okay, so um on number one, for the Oswego um student mental health clinic, we don't pay anything. What we do is we supply them a room, uh, a desk, phone connection, and then they bill all the services directly to to the parents.
Okay.
So that is a no cost to the district. Um, health and welfare services, that's for two thousand twenty-three dollars and seventy cents. That is for study students that are uh pending um non-public school. The South Aldridge, um, we already did, and the UTK, we get federal funding for um four thousand or four hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars in federal funds. And we have about fifty thousand dollars in the general fund to support that program as well.
And that's positive, right?
Yes, it is. Mm-hmm. Um, and then the foster student transportation, that just comes directly out of the transportation budget for um uh, we work with the Department of Social Services, if it's over a certain mile or if the, if it's determined that um, having a student stay in their um home district, say it's Fulton or whatever, um, then we, you know, if it's over a certain mileage, then we could still back without the transportation aid to the Department of Social Services, but our transportation aid is so high, we usually don't have to do that. And um, Deveraux, I don't have the cross in front of me on Deveraux yet, that's just their agreement. But probably close to, I'd say a hundred thousand dollars for residential. Um, and it is also changed this year where we pay for the majority of um the housing part now too, the states have passed that on for the school districts, so that is a change.
That's one of the things that that keeps popping up before, because once students, as I said, like, if they're responsible and if they're concerned about, so even then it's substantial, no matter what it is. Cause we had no last year, three, I think last year, or something.
Um, we had three, I'm not sure whether it was last year or the year before, we had three students who lived in other districts um, that had had to go to residential, those are things that can cause that here, which would sound like.
Right, that's the thing, it's just a question going forward, it's an unknown.
There are some stations, right, there are some places, and that place can without one on their ID, it would be important for them to receive the call. And it's a topic they can't.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, I would say, we do try to prepare or provide some fluff, anticipate some of that, but it's hard to predict.
So this is the McKinney-Ventor number six, that that is, and then also are, is the county transporting and we're reversing or what?
No, this isn't from McKinney-Ventor, this is for foster students.
No. But if they, if they are going to a certain school and how would we try, how that works?
So, so the Department of Social Services, they place the student.
Sure.
And then what happened is they reach out to us and say, you know, and we have to provide it as soon as possible. Um, they reach out to either the um social worker in school or the supervisor. And they say, can you take the student? And that's all worked out behind the scenes, they also work in direct concert with Tom Gunn in transportation because we might be able to work if it is, if the student is, it has to go to APW. Um, we usually, we usually work with other school districts in order to maybe help us out if you have a driver shortage or if you don't have one going out there. But most of the time, we usually make it happen within two to three days of a student being assigned to a school. And again, we don't have that, you know, these things happen frequently.
Yeah. Forget it.
No.
Could, can we, I know being a radio out, but um but can we have a presentation of, I, we, we have a lot of mental health clinics that we do in every building and can we just do some kind of presentation to the board?
A different program.
On.
Yeah, I don't get it anymore.
What we have available, because we have psychology, we have social workers, we contract with somebody different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that brings up that, hey, in front of school meeting, that's nice.
Yeah, we can have a whole plethora of information.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do.
Something.
Uh, it should be very helpful.
Believe in first, obviously.
Sure.
Okay.
So one through six, if I could have um all in favor?
I'll.
Good enough.
Good enough. Next on the agenda is the capital projects, okay?
You're on Tom.
First of all, this is one thing, it still amazes me, whatever I talk to people, that they should know about what's going on, I'll ask them, what's happening down on Hillside? Okay, and yet there are people who voted for the project, so it, it's still, it's difficult to get out there, but as far as the update goes, we have a meeting every week, every Monday morning with uh, our construction, uh, family committee, and go through everything. Uh, process, uh, or progress right now, late in school, uh, everything that's going on over there, all the rough in is, should be done this week. Walls should be, uh, in terms of dam on everything should be taken care of this week, and basement ring should also be completed there this week, and fire alarm. So a lot of the stuff that we're over there, you're not familiar with, are the locker rooms, the new locker room, the back end, and some classrooms as well, correct? Yeah, that's true there, and so that's.
In the lobby.
In the lobby, yeah, and one of the, yeah, because there's gonna be concession stands in the lobby, it's gonna be built into some of the activity room space, and that's what we're doing there. Uh, the double-edged sword of COVID is that they were to jump on everything much earlier, they're out telling to compromise construction with students and activity going on, so they're moving along at a good pace. Um, and the metal stud work is done there completely, the drywall is stacked and on site, so that's moving along, that's here. The high school, the demolition continues this week, all the abatement is finished over there, they're just waiting for some air test results to come back. Um, classroom plumbing is finishing up this week, and the fire alarms from there will be next week. Uh, at the middle school, they're pouring pads and basically for the newborns, they're upstanding pads they call them, and putting that in over there. Pit U, moving along with the roofing, again, people don't see that, relative to, I don't know, probably everyone sees this, but a lot of the home CDs. The two is uh, moving on quite well, they're halfway done and should be done by next week over there, and then they'll jump over to Kingsford, uh, and can move on to that. Um, paving and curving, curving you see over on Hillside, East Street is done, and some adjusted to be in the city on that side, that's all there. And uh, if you look at the, the field, or look at what you see up there, everybody, um, looks at this as well, the two concrete um, foundations that you see right now, currently they're pouring the concrete pads with those. Those are the concessions and locker rooms, um, that will be underneath or around the bleachers, uh, and they're pouring that foundation thing. The other wall that you see from the post coming up, up around, let's see, will be the retention wall around the field, basically it's uh, hold for the field will be, they'll be finishing that off this week, and then grading up to that. All of the orange little thing that you saw up there, with all the dog houses, or the, you know, they're for the underground water retention system. And this, the last of them is being covered right now, then the section that goes between the concessions and uh, and the locker rooms and the field, that's being completed right now. Uh, let's see, the, the anchor wall should be finished next week, that's that wall all around the perimeter. Uh, field lights, um, July thirteenth for foundations, will start on July thirteenth, the foundation will go to field lights. And uh, the turf potential scheduled install for the first of August, uh, and uh, and that's where we are right now, and I can leave that for another day.
Um, can you repeat, every Monday at what time?
Uh, ten o'clock.
And the lead here?
It's a Zoom meeting?
No.
It's a Zoom meeting?
Oh.
Yeah, so you'll get an invite?
I got lost in the shuffle last year, but I think it was when I had the search and I was out.
And the meeting was frequently that.
Oh, I'm good.
We still walk sometimes, all right?
I walk, yeah, I just immediately dump, uh, uh, just one of the uh, contractors on the site, the, from the management team, and I'll meet them morning, sometime I just walk the site with them. Uh, if there's any other questions, I mean, the other part that people will ask a lot about, once you open where Wilbur Field was, that is going to be two practice fields with regular grass um, on top of it, the big mound of dirt that you see is not currently being sifted through for topsoil, and it was, topsoil was removed and that'll be sifted and put back in, and then uh, turf will be there, grass, regular uh, grass dirt will be laid down over that, but that is meant to be retention area for all the water problems that were on Hillside Avenue.
Now, is the dust available to use to do the walkthrough, or?
No.
What's the facility, so you keep me informed when that's coming?
I will, the one thing I need to do, and it's a lovely, lovely piece of equipment, I love it, it's a lovely cat that you can get from where? When I put mine on, my white cat's hysterically, it falls down, because it, it white cat, the instructions like that, but basically, you can be there and uh, and walk it.
Can you just give me a heads up when, the time and where, I would so enjoy that.
Generally, early in the morning.
Um, was anything changed, um, can I have somebody on the, who really can tell you that you uh, um, asked me if because he didn't remember that layout, was, was some of that layout changed?
No, no, that's the exact layout, the only thing, and it's not different, but we never saw it in elevation, is what we looked at for height, where it is for that. Because the other side of uh, on the hillside, that's where the parking area is. And so the layout is still the same, site, it is planned, it's exactly the same, I think it's just seeing come up in elevation, that people are looking at it and going, wait a minute, that's not, because they were projecting, oh, it should be a park. Even though everything's exactly the same.
The only thing that did change, and this was, and this was a remedial effort because of some uh, objectives we had to meet related to water retention, was that the existing Wilbur Field wasn't to be demolished until next year. But we had to make some modifications to our water retention system runoff in order to meet certain criteria. That's why Wilbur Field was removed a year sooner. And the other change is that the two, the two end-to-end grass Wilbur Fields, in place, place where the other one was, the elevation has dropped. And then there are also our two man-made ponds that, um, that will also help retain water, and they will wrap, have them wrapped around with baseball. The end of Wilbur is baseball, it's their kind of indicative.
Yeah, with the swells, with the, with the swells that have done.
I just have to step out, because we've had a graduation for a student that was um, restricted from graduating because of, in quarantine. And so he was gonna graduate at ten thirty, and I'm gonna try to put him off a little bit, because Heather and I had to be a little split up there, we're running a little long.
So, if you got some runoff, um, how, how are we, what happens if it comes down? Is there a safety issue going on?
They won't, they won't have water in them unless we have, what happened last year.
There's, there's preparation.
There's gonna be grass, yeah, there's never grass, it's not gonna be, yeah, the only dirt, really out of preparation.
Look at this, yeah.
Okay, and if we have an issue like last year, is that point impact, so it helps us to kind of, you can scrape flooded?
Yeah, but what I've told, mentioned, and that they did on us, what we've done with the water is just exceed the people we needed to, in terms of meeting our, uh, taking care of water out of here. Um, and I'm one of those.
So like how, right?
In May, in May, the one, the other department that, that, that's into this unfortunately is that the two store rooms that went down, and the city, there are two of them, about six foot diameter, and they're about sixty percent, eight, sixty, thirty, twenty, thirty, sixty or eighty percent off. And the city will not, will not, they were, cannot, will not, cannot do it now financially, they must probably, it won't be clear. Um, and uh, so as a result, that adds, if they were clear, I don't think we have any issue, because we've accommodated for enough capacity underground, to hold water. Um, so if it doesn't go into that, it's gonna, it's a whole, it's, right, so I'm on.
Think you owe to somebody, but if you want them to be made to do it, a D E C or something?
It's money, it's, it's, it's the, the price tag, except that with the, the mayor on it, the cost just to do, I believe, to have divers go down there and look at it was six or seven hundred thousand.
They're so well at getting grant money, perhaps they should write a draft for that.
Well, I, I think they're looking at it as an option, and if they've got one, but it's one of those things where it's not a priority to go into two things, I think it's not out there all the time, it's more than all the time.
I think that if you ask the homeowners that get flooded every time, that they would say, maybe a.
We managed it, yeah, we just talked about it, we was ready for the opportunity for that year.
But, but I don't see.
Well, I mean, it all takes time.
Right, it takes time, it takes time, and I, I think what we've done, unfortunately, we won't find out, if we're natural, we get a five-inch, an hour rainfall.
We hopefully never find out.
Yeah, that, that's hoping, let's hope it pays, I bet, and we find out very soon. I know, because that was always the line, so.
It's not, it's not only the bladder system that's kicking into the water, we're also mitigating that by flowing it into um, the old Wilbur Field.
Right.
So that's why it's rated down, so that we're taking care of our own water problem, and the, the problem of the water in the surrounding area.
Sure.
I, and I have one more question, the practice field, I guess I've just never understood why we're making the practice fields and not uh, regulation fields that they can utilize for that.
They are, they, they will, I believe, and I will, that's a completely necessary, Nancy, I believe in regulations, I prefer, for soccer and for.
Originally they weren't.
Yeah, but I believe they are, because I believe, I believe the track, literally the track, and then we're not, we're moving with the track, we expand it. There are scoreboarders that will be down there as well, so I believe they will be, I'm holding track.
Okay, but no, like we did.
No, no, but that would be just stand, stand up, they need no different, I think what happened is we flipped up, right, everything that was over here, and all the students over to find the school, there's no features or anything, they just do a big soccer field there, and we flipped up and built it there. Uh, so if you want to practice the actual games, I'm thinking of the place, um, I'll be there.
And is there a track?
No, there's not, but I think.
Do you understand?
Yes, nice, I, I.
With um, where are we now with the middle school uh, construction, and where, has anything been decided, or we're still in discussion?
We're in, we're in the design phase for phase three, which is the middle school. There've been a couple meetings with middle school, and I've sent a team to middle school twice, to visit the school in Syracuse, because it's a king and king project, that was completed, and we not only want them to look at the building, but we want them to listen to the instructional model and the, the way that they deliver instruction, they have visited once um, actually and once virtually.
So is that another idea for us to consider, what's there to be considered?
We wanted to see what other middle schools in the region that were uniquely designed by King and King, what they look like in terms of the layout. They have, they have similar heating uh, approach, I believe, but yet they have instructional pods, because that's our middle school, it's really, it, it, it's a, it's a gut, really. And we wanted them to have an opportunity to, to just design the new building creatively. So that's why they're invited, this, we need not invest the eye on King and King.
My question, um, where are we going to put seventh grade in there?
Oh, in turn, no, that, no decision has been made for that.
That's gonna probably be done.
That's gotta be done in the fall, because you, you have a year to decide where you're going to displace them in the fall of, in the fall of twenty twenty-one.
I just wanted to know where.
Oh, I guess I misunderstood where you were going.
Yeah, no, I just needed uh, where we were in the time.
That's gonna happen in the fall.
Cool.
Awesome.
So as, when the capital project was put forward on parole, was, there wasn't a granular detail then what the middle school renovation would look like?
No, that, we knew that we had to do significant renovations to the middle school, a, a lot of it around health and safety codes. For example, the interior classroom walls on the corridor side have um, that, those are walls and banks of lockers, and then above those lockers are glass, which was kind of cutting edge in nineteen eighty, but now, it doesn't need any help with safety standards, so all those walls have to be removed and reconstructed. Um, also the, the window walls on the exterior of the building, which are panels of glass and, and um, metal framing, those have to be completely removed as well. So the thought from the architect is, if you're gonna literally gut the building on the inside on the same footprint, you can literally reimagine and redesign the way the middle school teams are housed, are housed and operated. So that comes, that happens very with the design thinking, which is where, which is what they're starting to do now.
And so how does that relate to the house that was originally budgeted for that project?
It doesn't affect that whatsoever, there's a certain um, targeted budget line for that interior construction. And basically, as long as they stay in the same footprint, and it doesn't alter the library or cafeteria, that footprint can't be enlarged. Um, they can pretty much do whatever they want within the, within those walls.
Oh, God, it could even come cheap.
It possibly could.
Would you have more flexibility to do it?
Right, never does. Never does.
Or you don't have to do, you know, any more iterations, redesign, that was possible.
That's right, so that's why we wanted to bring in the administration and the construction staff at the middle school early, and we started that actually eight to nine months ago, visiting um, schools.
Oh, my question, has Dr. Calvin came in?
Yes.
And has he touched a day with you?
Not a full day, but I invited him in last week, he came in and spent about three and a half hours with me, about an hour that time with Karen as well. Um, and he'll, he submitted a schedule, we're gonna try to coordinate our schedules, so that we have time together, and we have time alone. And his first um, day on site is tomorrow morning.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Nancy, I was wondering if in terms of, of the process as we go along, I know it's tough to assess the budgetary aspect of it, because we will go along with it, your way that on a monthly level, would, would say, are we on schedule and are we on budget? And in terms of that, can we look at that? And I mean, those scheduling issues, you can look at, you can, you got the different numbers, but budgetary, yes, we can slide it, and we, I don't know if it's possible, but that's a moving, um, you know, rule number, but it's a, a good idea as well. I know we don't have any, change orders are very few, so I know that.
Well, I have received the listing of change orders, I just got it from King and King yesterday, I haven't reviewed it yet, so that's going to come into facilities community and to the board.
Okay.
And it has, it really should be coming through for them in the, or a, a monthly basis.
That's why it's one in monthly.
In order to, to review, but uh, um, and also to the facilities community to review before that, to say, yes, we think this is a good idea, no, you know, we really don't think that that's a good way to store, we really should be spending that kind of money for change order. So those will be coming monthly, and we'll, we will be reviewing that, in terms of the total budget, um, that's a little more difficult.
Yeah.
Only because um, right now, we have to go out and we have to ban for um, twenty, I think John said nineteen to twenty-one million dollars. And a ban is a short-term note, and we usually ban for one year, and we go out and see what the market looks like, and we like ban again for the next year, you can only ban for two years, and then we go out and bond for that month. Um, so as soon as we have those actual accurate figures for what um, they think is in this phase, that they're gonna start rebuilding as well, uh, I'll be able to know where or what they had put in for the budget for this amount, and um, see if I can get from Peter or from uh, Craig Bailey um, the money that's been spent today.
Yeah, so you know, the phase you just referred to, is that phase three or phase two?
Phase two.
Phase two.
Our current, our current, we already have some built for phase three, because King and King isn't their design phase, so they are submitting um, invoices as well as we just approved construction associates for phase three, um, and they are going to be in those meetings as well. So we will be seeing some fills for that, and then any other um, ad hoc subcontractors that they may need for the middle school in terms of um, soil testing, asbestic baitment, those things will be coming forward as well.
But any decision that facilities committee makes, with official, like if a school will like change, and that, that doesn't come back to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But um.
They're not really a group that facilities committee, they just share opinions, or perspectives of a board member, but any changes have to be put by the board entirely.
And that's question, we, we're not.
Yeah.
But sometimes Heather, what might happen is they have a change order, which would keep the um, continuing of the work. So the facilities committee at times had agreed with the um, construction associates, that if it is um, something that needs to be done right away, we'll let that go, and then bring it back to the board following up with the agreement.
So I think that, in and out of that, will you be able to run the whole board, that set up? That, that has to be a full board decision, as opposed to just a silly committee decision?
Yeah, I believe, there's certain things to talk, we need to discuss in terms of, now, in those situations, if we need to approve a facility, because of time, or that not, we, we definitely have the flexibility to do that. Or, and anything about that, that, or, and, and, in terms of, full approval.
So that should need a resolution, that we have the full board approach to grant, you the power to do that.
Right.
Official resolution written up, so that we all say, I have wondered sometimes how, cities have. Official resolution written up so that we all say, I have wondered sometimes how students have been made, but it's never come back to us and that's kind of.
Can you give an idea about the, at least for how long it's been going on, so some of these change orders that would ask, would you consider what kind of dollar amount to call them up?
Three quarters, fifty five.
You said we're gonna put some kind of limit and say, you know, above this, please bring it back to the hole. You know, kind of have an idea where, I don't even know what ballpark we're for you and what kind of change.
Right, right.
Maybe one example might, one example might be the grass on the Wilbur Field practice field, right? The, um, there was a lot of conversation with facilities committee and architectural meeting with our, with our landscape architecture designers as well. We had a few options related to how we would, how we would put grass on those to do it. Because while we're under construction for in many other areas, getting the Wilbur Fields up and running as quickly as possible was critical. So there was a lot of conversation in the facilities committee, construction meeting about our options related to hybrid seed and the amounts of time and seasons required for that to be safe and durable versus spending forty thousand dollars additional to put sod and to kick our kids on it much quicker, more quickly. And so sometimes decisions like that might be made by the facilities committee superintendent. Um that would just be one example.
The other thing too that.
There might be a change order.
Yeah, but the other thing too is, is I've been looking at that, because what we're seeing sometimes is an offset on decision, it's a simple thing, but like the painting of the um of the leechers.
Yeah.
Right, it was a fifteen thousand dollar savings to save. And it was an aesthetic choice, it's a choice, because they brought us pictures of the back of the leeches, are we gonna paint them? Uh how we're close them, which is just a fifteen thousand dollars, but who do we need them to galvanize when it matches up with everything else? You know, that's purposeful, so it's that if we can save that money there and offset it over there, you know, we can say, okay, we made that decision, do not do that. So um but we need to come together and like you say, okay, what's the point of the tent and cannot, what will hit the progress, what will, you know, make things work that.
Yeah. You have an official resolution and we can approve it and there's no confusion as to, yeah.
So along these lines, I'm also wondering what would constitute a change order as opposed to something that was originally budgeted for a particular amount that whose cost may have changed a little bit for something we didn't see, whether it be, I don't know, a cost of something that happened. What does constitute an official change as opposed to maybe a slight variation?
I'm trying to think of an example for a change order um for this project. If they ran into a problem, for example, first of all, they know it's not covered with change orders.
Right.
They don't want to change it. Because that's an unanticipated problem, they should have known.
But for example. Fire hydrant?
Go ahead, yeah.
Fire hydrant, they about in terms of um the city wanted, uh what they call a roof system in the fire hydrant out there, so we had roofs up. Uh in moving it, one had been designed in as a dead end, a dead end, we did not want that. So uh we designed, but I think they have, you you configured that to something susceptible to to the city um without any trust, but had we have to do that and accommodate it, that would have been a change order. Um and they would come back and say, we need to change on that, it's gonna cost more, now we have to make a roof system to do this. Uh and that wasn't put everything, we didn't know, and so they exposed everything, what the city's, the system wasn't what they accepted. Uh it turned out though, again, I don't know if it, from the intuition of Greg Davis and all the design we've got, it should be a credit, it should be a credit on that, depending on most of it. So looking at the change order, if anything unforeseen in the design process, I think it would.
More about designing than doing an actual slight variation in cost, actually changing.
That's correct, so what happens, what happens is when all of the contracts are left to to all the prime contractors, they all have their blueprints. And if anything is not on that blueprint, that and and they find that it has to happen, that would be a change order.
And we ran into it again, potentially, uh but I think it's resolved with the gas line, but the city didn't know, or store lines, they did well, but they discovered.
We expected to find a lot of surprises and had decided to remove one at a time. So far, we have, we're finding vehicles in an area. This is a, it was a scary area.
A water tank.
It was a lot.
Yeah, I would, I kind of, I would suggest that maybe we postpone the board for the for our next meeting. But we do have to move into respective sections.
I'll be, I'll be, I'm making a call again, I've been called for two months, so.
Yeah, okay, can we table that for your study? Yeah, let's table that, or maybe I can conduct a conversation in that, or go with our group to get everything that's on.
They're not gonna deny it.
No, they're not. So I'm, yeah, we need a motion.
Wait, what?
And somebody said that.
Yeah.
On paper?
Uh.
And with the board, please move to the session. We can very briefly, in matter of activation. Could I have a motion?
Move it.
That's good. On paper?
Uh.
A vote. I'm so sorry about the picture.
I'm just checking out Instagram.
Can you email us what um business units are and what they, that's what I thought, but just, we have it in writing. Um and what the benefits of it are, so that everything is on.
Sure.
The attachment is uh more.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Yep, the invoice is on there, but I can't email it. It's a lot of those. I missed that. But I think that we need to come rushing to stop, because we actually need. Yes, what we have done is our personally from it.
Does anyone know how to.
Turn off the livestream.
They should have asked, yeah.
Oh, do you have a question in the other room?
That's what I'm.
That one I already there.
Okay.